Good evening, everyone. We'll call to order the regular meeting of the City Council of the City of East Ridge, July 22, 2021, 6:00 p.m. I'd like to invite Daniel Beer with Action Church, if he'll come forward and provide us with our invocation and lead us in our pledge. If everyone will stand.
Let us first pray. Dear Heavenly Father, I just want to first thank you for this opportunity this evening. Thank you, Father, that we could gather here together, and thank you, God, that we all each have our health. God, I pray tonight, God, over our mayor and over our council and over each of our governing authorities. God, I pray, God, on every various level of the city, officials represented here tonight, that the meeting would go well, that the agenda set before us, God, that the agenda would be decided well, that decisions would be made for the best interest of our city and for our citizens, God. God, that even with conflicting interests and issues of our times, God, I pray, God, that we could all just work out what's best for our city, Lord. God, I pray, God, tonight, God, that each and every person here represented, God, would leave here tonight knowing that, God, that decisions were made, but made for the best interest for each of us involved. And, God, I give you all the praise and glory, in Jesus' name. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, invisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir. Roll call, Ms. Middleton.
Mayor Williams.
Here.
Vice Mayor Chauncey.
Here.
Councilmember Cagle.
Here.
Councilmember Hilton.
Here.
Councilmember Witt.
Here.
City Manager Dorsey.
Here.
City Attorney Litchford.
Here.
All right, we'll move to item four. Approval of the minutes of July 8, 2021. Assume everyone had an opportunity to review the minutes. I'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve the minutes.
Second.
Have a motion to approve by Vice Mayor Chauncey and a second by Councilmember Witt to any discussion or corrections. I see none. Roll call, Ms. Middleton.
Vice Mayor Chauncey.
Yes.
Councilmember Cagle.
Yes.
Councilmember Hilton.
Yes.
Councilmember Witt.
Yes.
Mayor Williams.
Yes. Move to item five, communications from citizens. This is an opportunity for any citizen or business owner to come forward and address the council with any questions, concerns, accolades, and each individual will have five minutes. Have no one signed up? Is there anyone who would like to come forward out in the audience? I see no one. We'll move on to communications from council members. I'll start on this side. Councilmember Witt.
I just want to thank the volunteers that came out Friday to help with the 100-year celebration. And if you haven't gone by the park, Camp Jordan, do that and have a selfie made with our cup sign that we have out. So, we're very proud of it, and thank you, volunteers, for coming.
Thank you.
Got nothing at this time.
Vice Mayor.
I have nothing, Mayor.
Vice Mayor Cagle.
I was wondering what the follow-up was on North Smith about the condition road down there in McCall.
Michael Howell was in direct contact with our Street Department Supervisor, Chris Vaughn, and they were working on getting the contracts updated with our street cut contractors to get the extended warranty time for two years. Currently, they are only responsible for the repairs after one year, so the Street Department will go down to repair those holes on McCall. Any further street cuts will have the two-year warranty, so we can reach back out to the contractors to get any second holes repaired.
Thank you, sir. Anything else? All right. I, too, would like to thank the volunteers, the hard work they've done, and the entire Centennial Committee. They've done an awesome job, and if you haven't been out to the page and see all the vendors, the events, the activities that are going to occur, it's going to be spectacular. It's going to be awesome. I would like to also remind you, not this weekend, but next weekend, is the balloon glow event, the 30th through the 1st. It's Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. Gates open at 5:30. 6 to 9 is going to be tethered rides. Again, this is going to be amazing in our city with the balloons and with them actually glowing. It's going to be awesome. Then, back to the Centennial. That is September the 25th. You'll hear me talk about it every council meeting. It's going to be a grand event. We're going to celebrate our 100 years, honor our history, and celebrate our progress in looking forward to our future. So, again, that's very exciting, and the team has, committee has done a great job, like I said, in preparing and getting support and vendors. So, it's going to be amazing. So, short list today for me. I'll hand it off now to City Manager Dorsey.
Thank you. You still got two of my items. It was a short list. But I will repeat the Centennial. We're looking forward to that on September 25th. Praying for good weather. We're hoping everything goes well that day. We have great bands.
Don't jinx us.
I know. Too late, though. Sorry. Bands, crafts, all different sorts of vendors, food trucks. So, we're looking forward to having a real good event and capped off by fireworks.
Going out with a bang.
So, yes, literally. Literally. So, that'll be good. This week, we put out a request or proposal for sanitation for disposal services. Our contract with Allied Waste, Allied Waste BFI Republic, whatever their name is this week, they keep merging and changing, but Allied Waste, I believe is their name. Their contract ends in August, at the end of August, so we're putting out a RFP to look into getting a new round of prices for the disposal. We have to take our garbage trucks to a transfer station to then have the garbage disposed of after that point. We're looking at getting new tonnage rates in. So, we'll have something to present to the council probably the mid or end of August on that, when it comes back. We're also doing a request for qualifications for engineering, design, and construction and inspection on the entrances to the development over there by the Red Wolves to start looking into working some more on that, especially with the expected traffic that'll be coming in at those intersections along Spring Creek and along Ringel Road. So, we just put out the RFQ on that today. And the other item I have deals with Chief Williams. He has some radios that he would like to get with the Homeland Security Grant. That was from the fall.
2019.
Yeah, I was going to say, fall 2019, right?
Yes.
Found out he still has $15,000 to spend. So, he's in desperate need of radios. So, I said, "Let's get the radios." But I said, "You've got to tell council first." So, either if we can put in a new business or we could discuss it now, whichever is better for you all.
I'm good adding it.
Okay.
The only difference in that was it was approved by council for $15,000. We went over that amount by...
$13.
$13, 43 cents.
So, since it is over the $15,000 mark, we wanted to make sure that the council would bless that, you know, give us permission for that.
Plus, it was first approved in a different budget period from two years ago. So, we also just want to make sure you're aware of that and the fact that they would be purchased from Motorola.
That's correct. Motorola's on the statewide contract for this, and it's, I believe, a contract for...
Just came up this afternoon.
Don't think she just gave me her paperwork, okay? This is my paperwork. I let her borrow it.
That's right.
The statewide contract is for '24. It is for Motorola radios. The grant was received. It was a 2019 grant. These grants are behind. In other words, we may be getting a grant for 2021, and it'd be for 2020. So, they're a little bit behind it, so it kind of throws us back. So, we had two stacking on top of each other. So, this did get lost in some paperwork, and it was brought to my attention that we still had money left over through Amanda and Diane, so this is good news. We also made sure, went back and looked at the council had approved the resolution for that. All that was documented and confirmed. But the purchase was over $15,000, and it was 15, 13. The 13 would come out of my budget.
Plus the... Yeah, $13. Plus, the resolution accepted the grant for the purchase of radios, but it didn't necessarily say who the radios were going to come from, how many, and all that. So, just to be transparent, we want to bring it back from the council, and he just brought this to me this afternoon, and they're ready to go ahead and get them. So, we could either do it today. Is it going to hurt if we wait two weeks, or are we going to go ahead and get them?
It's going to be three weeks.
Three weeks, excuse me.
That's going to hurt.
Huh? Excuse me?
Three weeks, it'll hurt.
Three weeks, it's going to hurt.
I'll do whatever's easier for the council.
Yeah.
I'm fine. We can add it to D and just move the discussion of the tentative agenda down if we want to get it to that.
Thank you, yeah. Because honestly, we might not even need a vote on it, but I'd just rather be safe than sorry.
I agree. All right, we'll add it to the end of the agenda.
Thank you, sir.
So, everything you said, you have to say again.
Yeah, there you go. And that's all I have.
All right. Thank you, sir. We'll move into old business. Under 8A, we have discussed, take action on the dog park. Vice Mayor Chauncey.
Yes, Mayor, Council. I, Monday before last, I had reached out to the Dog Park Dash on their website, and Monday, a gentleman by the name of Harrison Forbes had called me back, and I explained to him kind of what we're wanting to do, or what I was wanting to do, is just trying to explain to him about a proposed alternate site and if it would be okay, if they would come down and look at the site. Not necessarily speaking for the entire council, but just wanted to see if we had an option to move the address for the grant. And he seemed optimistic that it probably could work, but he does want to come in and look at the site, and he's going to come in, I think, by the end of this month. So, he's going to meet me down here at City Hall. Anybody else is welcome to come. City Manager, I don't know a date or time yet, but I'll be sure to let you know. So, I guess we could just table it until the next council meeting, and maybe I'll have some more information after I speak to him here.
So, the next council meeting is going to be actually three weeks, so it'll be the 12th of August.
How long do we have to do this grant? Is there a timeline on the grant?
At this time, we're just waiting for the presentation. And then, I think we have up until one full calendar year, once we accept the grant.
So, we're still in the initial presentation paperwork phase, so we're fine.
So, the time hasn't started ticking yet.
And I have talked to, if I can talk about it, I've talked to Vice Mayor Chauncey about the site, and knowing we may have some things happening on the other part of the site, I suggested to him, and he reminded me that we even mentioned this a while back, but I think I slipped since then, so I apologize to him. The area between City Hall and the driveway that goes to McBride School, where we do National Night Out, in that area, there's easily a quarter acre there that would be a lot easier for us to use. It's actually closer to the parking at the south end of that, and it's closer to available water that we might be able to use. So, I think that might be the site you might show him, maybe?
Yeah, absolutely. I'm excited about that location, too. I just didn't, I didn't think it'd go over too well. Well, Buck said, "We talked about it a while back," but, you know, never really pursued it any further, but I like that site as well, so... And if it'll prohibit us from violating any type of, or conflicting with any future developments that could go on that property, if that makes more sense to me, sure.
Okay, awesome. All right, so I'll entertain a motion to table the next council meeting, is what I think I heard.
I make a motion and leave it on the table because we tabled it the last time.
Oh.
Tabled it the last time.
Do we table it, though, for this council meeting?
You tabled it for a specific period of time, so that's why I came back up.
I thought, yeah.
It wasn't just laid on the table indefinitely.
For this council meeting, so I make a motion and leave it on the table.
Second.
All right, have a motion to place it on the table, correct? I didn't hear a date, so we're just going to motion to place it on the table by Councilmember...
Don't know when they're coming, so...
Okay, that's fine. We can pull it off.
He's going to come probably next week, by the end of this month, so I'll, by the next council meeting, I will have spoken to him and got a definite answer from him.
Okay. Got a motion to table by Councilmember Cagle and a second by Councilmember Hilton. Any other discussion? Roll call, Ms. Middleton.
Vice Mayor Chauncey.
Yes.
Councilmember Cagle.
Yes.
Councilmember Hilton.
Yes.
Councilmember Witt.
Yes.
Mayor Williams.
Yes. All right, we'll move into new business. Item A, Resolution Number 3171.
A resolution of the City Council of the City of East Ridge, Tennessee, to approve the appointment of an individual by Councilmember Hilton to fill an unexpired term on the East Ridge Personnel Board.
Yes, I would like to appoint Mrs. Carol Groan. She's been living in East Ridge now for about a year, and we're honored that you would do this for us, Carol. Thank you.
Thank you. So, I'll entertain a motion for Resolution 3171.
Make a motion to approve 3171.
A second.
Have a motion by Vice Mayor Chauncey and a second by Councilmember Witt. Do we have any discussion? Roll call, Ms. Middleton.
Vice Mayor Chauncey.
Yes.
Councilmember Cagle.
Yes.
Councilmember Hilton.
Yes.
Councilmember Witt.
Yes.
Mayor Williams.
Yes. Congratulations and thank you for your service. We'll move to item B, Resolution Number 3172.
A resolution of the City Council of the City of East Ridge, Tennessee, approving the adoption of the local programs procurement policy.
Yes, the T.D.O.S., local programs. We've been working on our grants, and we have to adopt their procurement policy, which is the purchasing policy, in order to process all our reimbursements with the state. So, with grants, we will be using their purchasing policy. We already do, but we're making it official.
Another hurdle they want us to go through.
Yes.
Understand. I'll entertain a motion for Resolution 3172.
I make a motion to approve Resolution 3172.
Second.
Have a motion to approve by Councilmember Witt and a second by Vice Mayor Chauncey. Do we have any discussion? Roll call, Ms. Middleton.
Vice Mayor Chauncey.
Yes.
Councilmember Cagle.
Yes.
Councilmember Hilton.
Yes.
Councilmember Witt.
Yes.
Mayor Williams.
Yes. We'll move to item C, Resolution 3173.
A resolution of the City Council of the City of East Ridge, Tennessee, authorizing an agreement with Hamilton County regarding ambulance medical services. Members of council and mayor, this is, City Manager Dorsey has talked about this previously. This is with Pocket going out. The city is going to reach an agreement with the county, and in connection with this county agreement, we have drafted basically a procurement agreement here. You should have here an updated revised one dated 7/22 on your table. It's been, so the idea here is that it's a four-year term agreement. During that four-year term, the city would pay roughly $170,000. That's based upon the population of the city and $8 per citizen. And so, it'd be four years of $169,000, $170,000. So, over four years, that comes out to around $680,000. And after that four years, the city has the option to renew this, at which point it would renew it, but the consideration incentives under Section 4, the city wouldn't have to pay that. And so, it's been brought to my attention, I have spoken with Assistant County Attorney, Neil Sutherland, great person to work with. When we talked today to reaffirm that under Section 2, the city's right to renew it for additional years, or for an additional four years, she did verbally confirm, yes, it's for the services, you wouldn't have to pay the incentives under Section 4. There's been, I talked to Councilman Cagle. If you all are, want, I can, if we want to approve this, we can approve it. Councilman Cagle, I think, may, not taking word, but he likes the idea of maybe clarifying Section 2 to clarify that any renewal would not include, it would only be renewal for services and not include renewal of the incentives under Section 4A. And so, this is what we have here with respect to this resolution.
All right, thank you, sir. I'll entertain a motion for Resolution 3173.
Make a motion to approve it with the amendment.
Second.
And to clarify that amendment, Ms. Middleton, would be to include an amendment in Section 2 clarifying that it would not include renewal of Section 4A incentives. And if the council will allow, I will get that clarification submitted to Ms. Sutherland, consistent with the motion.
Thank you, sir. I know that's the understanding, but it's always best to have it in print.
I have a question, if I could, please. Is that going to then have to go back to the county for another vote because we won't have time?
So, that's a great question. When I talked to Ms. Sutherland today, I mean, she said the understanding is that the incentives is not part of the renewal, and then she went and revised Section 2 to say renewal of services. And if you look at the difference between what was in the pack and what we got, it says in line 2 there, "The city may renew this agreement for such services for additional four-year terms." I feel comfortable with Ms. Sutherland that if we make the clarification, the clarification's just going to say, "May renew this agreement for such services exclusive of the incentives under Section 4A." My takeaway in talking to her is that's going to be fine. They don't have to reapprove it at the county because that's what they understand it already to be. I can't guarantee, but she at least said verbally on the phone today, because I asked her, I said, "Well, we have to, since we're modifying what was approved." She said, "No, because this is what they already intended to," or that was what they understood the agreement to be when they voted yesterday. So, not a great answer, but I think that's the answer she gave me already.
Can I give my reasoning?
Oh, absolutely, yeah. Yeah.
Four years from now, when this is due, I may not be here, you may not be here, none of us may not be here. Four years from now, Ms. Sutherland may not be down there.
That's true.
So, the new people coming on may not take the same view of this contract as we are assuming we are now, and that's the reason why I'm wanting it clarified in it.
That's right. And we have exchanged emails where I feel like that's sufficient purposes of clarifying in this, that maybe we won't have to deal with Hamilton County, you know, having to go back also. The emails are there, but, you know, Councilman, we'll clarify this with the amendment, and I'll get that over to Ms. Sutherland.
When you take that to her, on 4A, you and I mentioned this earlier, and, you know, our intent that we have had with our discussions with the county, you're right, we're both in sync on exactly what we meant in there, but just the verbiage may not be great on some things. But like on 4A, it says to pay them $169,456 over a period of four years. It should say to pay them that per year, over a period of four years. Otherwise, we're only paying them, what, you know, a fourth of that every year, just paying $169 for the entire period, which we know that's not what it is, but...
That's a great point.
Not worded very well.
Ms. Sutherland and I, we talked about that on the phone today also, and, I mean, she said she thought paragraph, or sent the first part of the sentence about that where it talks about per person, per fiscal year, but I agree with you, City Manager. That also should say it, yes.
It's the only interpretation.
That's why you have lawyers.
Lots of them. All right, we have a motion by Councilmember Cagle and a second by Councilmember Hilton. Do we have any other discussion? Roll call, Ms. Middleton.
Vice Mayor Chauncey.
Yes.
Councilmember Cagle.
Yes.
Councilmember Hilton.
Yes.
Councilmember, excuse me, Councilmember Witt.
Yes.
Mayor Williams.
Yes. All right, we will move to item D, which is the insertion of the purchase of the radios.
This will be, what we'll designate as Resolution 3174, approving the purchase of the Motorola radios for the amount of $15,013 and...
43 cents.
43 cents.
Let me double check. 13, 43, yeah.
All right. I'll entertain a motion for Resolution 3174.
Make a motion to approve 3174, to approve the $13,013 and whatever cents it is.
43.
$15,013.
13, 43, yes.
Second.
All right, we have a motion to approve by Councilman Cagle and a second by Councilmember Hilton. Do we have any other discussion? I see none. Roll call, Ms. Middleton.
Vice Mayor Chauncey.
Yes.
Councilmember Cagle.
Yes.
Councilmember Hilton.
Yes.
Councilmember Witt.
Yes.
Mayor Williams.
Yes. All right, now, we'll move to item E, which is discussion of the tentative agenda items for August 12th. So, we will have, underneath Section B, we'll have a discussion of Centennial Celebration?
Yes, Dana Howell and David Tyler are planning on coming at that meeting to promote the Centennial, to talk about where we are and everything, and just get us fired up and get ready to go with it.
Awesome. Any questions, council? We have nothing under old business, and under new business, we'll have an unnumbered resolution, bids for sports photography opens on August 3rd. Yes, sir.
Yes, Mayor and council, we are planning on opening bids for sports photography on August 3rd, and then we'll have a recommendation at the next council meeting on the 12th.
Thank you, sir. Any questions, council? I see none. Item B was another unnumbered resolution, annual bids for Street Department materials will also open August 3rd.
This is usually an annual thing that goes through, through the Street Department to be able to have material to use throughout the year, things like asphalt and other street repair material, concrete blocks, brick, some sand and mortar mix, crushed stones, some topsoil, and various types of different drainage pipes, though. Every year, we'll come and we'll get bids for those that will last throughout the year, a bid price, and be able to have them honor that as we get supplies as we move forward.
Thank you, sir. Is there any discussion? Yes, sir.
On the asphalt, now, we're talking about the asphalt we come spreading, put out with the roller. Are we going to quote for bag asphalt because I've noticed we've been buying a lot of that?
Yes, it says in "other street material, repair material," so yes, you have the hot mix and the cold mix.
All right, anything else? See none. Item C is an unnumbered resolution. It's an appointment of the Planning Commission for Mayor Williams. There will be, item D is an unnumbered resolution for appointment to the Housing Commission, Vice Mayor Chauncey. And item E is another unnumbered resolution for appointment for Housing Commission, Councilmember Cagle. So, these will be advertised as usual for applications to be submitted. So, when will that go? Will that be a couple of weeks prior to the meeting?
I've already advertised it.
You already advertised it? Awesome. Awesome. All right, any questions on those three? Yes, sir.
Mayor, this is on respect to 9D and 9E. In talking with Councilman Cagle, he brought up a great point in our phone call today. If you'll look at the agenda memo with respect to items 9D and E, you'll notice that Ms. Stevens and Mr. Rogers have expiring terms of August 24, 2021. You'll see their start one was, you know, two years prior. The reason, all appointments under the Housing Commission, Title 13, Section 303, are for three-year terms. Ms. Middleton went back and she helped me locate in her history Resolution 2978, where, and that would have been, what, August of 2019? If you remember, for whatever reason, the Housing Commission appointments were all the same appointments, so we were replacing all five every three years, and we had to stagger them. So, we set up a system, and at that point, when we set up the system, we had staggering, Mr. Ezell at that time was a one-year, but then I think he was then reappointed by... Mr. Ezell at that time was a one-year, but then I think he was then reappointed by Councilmember Witt for three years after that. And so that's why these are only, you're seeing two years, it will be a three-year appointment with respect to the appointments by Vice Mayor Chauncey and Councilmember Cagle. So that's just clarification. It was just to get back and restore those staggered terms that somehow weren't staggered as, on the Housing Commission.
Alright, anything else?
I have one thing I forgot to mention earlier. And this is, relates to Chief Allen too. We're getting pretty tired of all these tractor trailers getting stuck in the tunnel. I have sent email, I've sent at least two or three emails to TDOT about this issue. If anybody's noticed, in the grass, which needs to be cut, on the left side, right before you get to the tunnel, the pole that used to go over the tunnel that said 11 feet, you know, you'd hit it right before you got in, has been sitting there for over a month. I haven't gotten a response, maybe it's because of summer vacations, things of that nature, I don't know, but I'm gonna try again tomorrow. I've sent, like I said, at least a couple of emails. I know it costs us a lot of time for police to go out there and have to deal with the situation. At one point, TDOT said they were gonna put in a more advanced warning system along Ringo Road and they were still developing it. So I've been trying to find out what the status is of that, you know, whether it needs to be before Germantown Road. I mean, we want something that's not totally ugly either, you know, that's intrusive, but, you know, with modern technology, there's ways to, to, to let trucks and everybody know, you know, you can't go any further before you get to the edge of the tunnel and you hit the bar, well, there's no bar now, and scratching the tunnel. If you notice, half the lights that they just replaced, what, six months ago, are already gone because the trucks are hitting them. And 11 feet's 11 feet, I don't care, well, I won't go into that. But anyway, that, I just wanted to bring that to the council's attention, that we have sent some emails to TDOT on that, we just haven't heard back yet, but I'll keep you up to date.
What, what can we do, is there anything we can do with these apps, indirectionals? Can we contact them to see, to stop their navigation to being routed?
I think the problem is because it, it, like, Waze and Google Maps and all that deal with cars and not trucks. There is a truck app, I've heard, but truckers use Google Maps instead and all that.
But they don't have the ability to, to note.
And it's not like there's, there's not signs along the way. There's a couple, you know, before you get to Germantown Road, then even before you get to South Seminole, that says 11 feet.
My understanding is that the app serves a map for trucks, but it's very expensive and they, they're all over the place.
We know it's a problem, we're trying to get with TDOT and-
Do they get fined? Is there any, any type of fine? Is there any kind of chargeback?
They can be charged with violation of a traffic control device, which the signs warning of that is a traffic control device. Then it's up to, they would go to court and it would be up to the judge to determine what, if any, fine there would be. We have been talking amongst ourselves in the police department about possibly contacting THP to come out and we got one stuck. And they can look at a whole lot more than just the violation of the sign because the trucks have to be inspected and they have to meet certain criteria and, but that's, what that's going to do, it will punish the ones that violate it, but it's not, I mean, by now they should have gotten word and they're not.
If you're with THP, you're just there a lot longer and it takes a lot more of your time.
That's true. And like I said, it only deals with the person, the truck that has violated those signs and it doesn't get passed down the road. It, I mean, we've been dealing with this for a long time and they're still doing it. So writing the violator's tickets is not gonna keep it from happening in the future. I'm awful writing them, but it just doesn't help, help in the future.
Well, if I was the trucking company, I was having to pay a bunch of fines, that would, it would bother me, but... Because I don't think the driver's paying it.
It just hasn't worked.
Has that worked? Okay.
And we start including the man hours, you're having to stay out there to deal with the situation and damage in the tunnel and-
That would have to be handled in court, right?
I'll be happy to, I'll be happy to make a phone call.
Let's all make a phone call.
That was it, I just forgot to bring that up earlier. Thank you.
Alright, anything else, council? I see nothing, so we will have a short meeting this evening. I will remind everyone, we'll have three weeks before the next council meeting, so everyone have a great, long weekend in weeks and we'll see everyone back in three weeks. Everyone have a good evening, good night.